The time is 6:00 PM and what a delightful crowd we have this evening. Thank you for joining us. This is the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for August the 14th. We have called this meeting to order, but I would ask if you have a cell device, if you have a cellphone, you have an iPad, would you please silence that so that we can give you our full attention and you can give us yours? So, we would like to make this as easy as possible. With that, council, we will stand for a pledge and Councilman Cook will give us an invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together tonight. We are so blessed to live in this community and be surrounded by so many people that care for each other and care for our town and our staff and all that is around us. Please be with us during this meeting to make the best decisions for our community. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, council members, you have received copies of the July 25th and August 3rd council meetings. One was a special call meeting, the other was a regular town council meeting. Do we have any changes, deletions, or additions?
You're in on a move to approve. Second.
Okay, so we don't have any. I have a motion by Councilman Helms and a second by Councilman Moody. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers, which I think we had at the podium, prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. So, I have a list. Did everyone have an opportunity to sign in? Okay. With that, we will start with, is it Justin Houston?
That's her.
All right, Justin, if you'll come to the podium and repeat your address for the record, that would be great.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name is Justin Houston. I live at 1613 Kilburn Lane. I'm in the Springfield neighborhood, just on this side of town.
Okay.
I won't take too much of your guys' time, so we've got a full house. About two weeks ago, I was going to come here and say something totally different. Live in Springfield. Our community's been built over the last couple decades. We moved in in 2018. I'm personally in North Carolina, born boy, moved to Georgia, came back, and we wanted to be in Fort Mill just after seeing all that's going on in McMurk County. We love living here. What I was going to say previously is our sidewalks are aging. And by aging, I mean they're extremely bad. I could pull up pictures so I can email, but we've got some gaps that are like three and a half inches, and I'm not exaggerating. I went out there with tape measure myself. And the neighborhood had previously been striped in October of 2022. Nothing happened. I was glad to see it look like progress. Then in April, it got striped with a new color, orange to white, and still nothing had been done. And so finally, I took it upon myself, I was like, all right, apparently we know there's a problem. What are we doing to fix it? I caused a stink on the HOA because I assumed that they are the ones that were pushing this along. However, that was two weeks ago. Reached out to Brad Pruitt. Don't mean to talk about personnel matters, but I do want to just say thank you to the Utilities Department. Within 72 hours, they were back out there. We're back at striping. It's progress, but we're back at striping. I hope to see it through. I know there's budget concerns and there's budget issues and fixing sidewalks and routes aren't cheap, but do appreciate that we got the ball rolling again. Just want to make sure we can see it through because there's kids that have been injured. My kid, my own child fell off a scooter on one, there's other kids, there's people on the Facebook that'll show you bruises they've had, and I'm not expecting perfection. I mean sidewalks are not perfect. It's 10-year-old neighborhood, 10-year-old sidewalks, there's trees, it's lovely, it's going to age. I'm not expecting perfection, but some of these gaps are scary, especially as leaves start to fall and runners and walkers and nighttime runner. I run in the morning when it's dark, so just want to make sure I see it through. But I appreciate the progress that I am seeing, so.
Well, I appreciate you recognizing that they responded. Oftentimes, people don't recognize they need to make that phone call.
Yeah.
So, having made that phone call and having someone respond to you certainly is a good thing for all of us to hear. Sidewalks are an issue everywhere. And we have locations that don't have sidewalks and they would very much like to have them. But I read recently that sidewalks per foot are more costly than roads. So, and I think it's because of the curb and gutter and the type of work that goes into it. So, certainly, we set aside money on an annual basis that gets poured into that. We also require that a developer bring sidewalks up to our standards before we take over those roads and sidewalks. We've had some areas where that wasn't the case, so they had to come cut them out.
Sure.
And replace them. So, I feel certain after having you here this evening, we'll make sure that something goes back to the Utilities Department to determine what areas they can get to as quickly as possible.
Excellent. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, Gretchen, is it Benner?
Good evening, Gretchen Benner, 1705 Brittany Lane.
And where is Brittany Lane, Gretchen?
Two miles from here, Wimbledon Woods subdivision.
Yeah, that's outside the town limits, so I just want to make that clear.
But part of my public comment is about the town limits, so thank you for welcoming me. I'm here along Justin's lines of safety and sidewalks requesting an accessible way for students to get to Fort Mill High School. From 77, overpass, up Harris, there's no safe way to get there. You have so many residents living here, to say it's a safety and health issue is an understatement. Additionally, we've contacted the town multiple times because of that little roadway that keeps washing out right near the overpass. That's a safety issue as a runner and a biker and family that walks about to the church nearby on Mun Street. So, yeah, we're just, again, following up to advocate for a healthier community to live and thrive in.
I can tell you that that was a comment that was heard as far as the safe passage for students at the recent meeting we had at Catawba Ridge High School for the Pennies Project for Money. Funding for roadways and sidewalks comes from a number of places, and making a good argument that we deserve it is sometimes we get drowned out by larger areas. However, to know that you've come before us and you've made this request makes it easier to say, we need this, our public needs it, they ask for it. So, yes, I recognize you don't live in the town, I just want to make sure because a lot of people don't know where the town limit is, but it is an issue that we discuss at RFATS and I will bring it up at our next meeting in September.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Kimzie. Good evening.
I'm Bobby Kimzie. My address is 1730 Saddlewood Drive. That is the old Williamsburg subdivision. It is also outside of the town limits. I moved to this town 40 years ago.
Four?
Forty.
Fourteen?
Forty.
Forty.
Four zero.
I was here when you died.
So, I watched it, the painfulness of what's happened. What I wanted to comment on this time is the end of the Little Sugar Creek Greenway that ends right at the state line in Regent Park. And I just wanted to share that in addition to the fact that obviously I don't have high school students any longer, I recently did 30 treatments of radiation at the Pineville Hospital. I drove to the parking lot at Regent Park and got on my bike and rode to every one of them and rode back. It wasn't a big deal, but that little parking lot has seven spaces. Each morning that I went, I was car number seven or I was car number eight. Okay? The section that I would ride would go up just a little bit beyond atrium Pineville and I would duck into a neighborhood there, a park crossing neighborhood, and I was able to navigate all the way to the hospital without ever hitting a roadway with traffic on it. And I would see pretty much a lot of the same kinds of people every morning. Probably about 40% of them were cyclists like myself and 50 to 60% were dog walkers or runners or just people walking. That area gets a lot of use. It is beautiful. It is absolutely beautiful. And it deadends in Regent Park, and I recognize that there's hope and wishes for being able to extend that into the town and not really seeing how that's going to be able to happen based on the neighborhood. The roads are not real wide, there's zero sidewalks, but I just wanted to be yet another voice with yet another reason why these passageways are important. It took me exactly 10 minutes longer to ride my bike than it would have been to drive there.
Oh, wow.
And park in the parking deck and walk down to my appointment, so.
So, do you deserve a cape because you're one of my folks?
No, that's not that big of a deal, but.
No, seriously, I think that's incredible to hear.
People here who know that I ride my bike all the time, so that's not really that big of a deal. But it's just, it's yet another example of how we can decompress our roadways. I could have ridden from home, but I wouldn't get on Springfield Parkway at that time of the morning.
I don't mind you.
I just wouldn't.
I don't mind.
And I don't know why, when those things were approved by the county, why they didn't put in, you know, parallel pedestrian paths alongside that. It would have been lovely. I could have ridden from home.
I'm going to defer to Penelope. Can you, Penelope is the town planner and she has the single responsibility for the town and working on our path.
On our trails, yeah.
And I think she might be able to share information with you that would be better than anything I could say.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. It's actually, it's very exciting news. We are currently working on a feasibility study. Because of this council, they gave us the okay to contribute money with Lancaster County and with York County and with the town of Fort Mill to look at a feasibility study to see how we can bring the Cross Charlotte Trail into the Regent Park.
Good.
So, that is something that literally I'm having a meeting on Wednesday with those team players and with Carolina Threat Trail because the grant or the money that the town has contributed and also York County and Lancaster County, basically Carolina Threat Trail will administer the consultant that we can look at the trail feasibility. So, that is something in the pipeline that we are doing, but thank you so much for being an advocate and for helping us help share to everybody the need for trails, just to look at different alternatives to transportation.
Right, right. And Penelope, if you would remind me, before the September meeting, I made a note, but you know how my notes go. We do look at all forms of modality, all forms, through the RFATS group. And two years ago, Mayor Geddeson Rockhill made a motion, he was the chair that year, to put $10 million aside to be used in the region for alternative.
Right.
Types of situations. So, I will definitely put that.
Right.
On the list. Any of you can attend those RFATS meetings. They're the last Friday of every month at noon sharp, and they'll put you to sleep, but they're very, very important meetings. So, I will be sure and put that there.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you.
There is a Fort Mill Community Facebook group page, is where I even heard that it was being presented today about the trails.
Yeah, we're excited.
So, that's a nice place to post those things to get the word out.
Very excited.
Okay.
So, thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Feel well. All right, Linda, is it Camer?
Go for it.
Camarda?
It's Camarda.
Camarda? Okay, cool.
Perfect.
Join us.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, first of all, I'm going to say this is my first meeting ever like this, but I wanted to participate more in the city because I love this city. I've lived in many places. I've moved like 10, 11 times all across the country. I love it here. I bought my second house here two years ago in Fort Mill. So, I live in the senior community at 10606 Talbot. So, it's a lot of, someone was representing the younger people, representing the little senior people. Anyway, it's in line with what everybody's talking about, sidewalks, and mine also includes trash.
Oh.
Because.
Hot button.
I walk every day, and I usually walk from the golf course up to Main Street, all around here, every day. And a lot of times in falling snow, I have to walk in the street because the sidewalks are filled with slippery leaves. There's so many breaks and cracks, a lot of it caused by root issues from the big trees. But a lot of the seniors won't walk because they're scared of falling. I don't blame them. I get scared too. So, a lot of times I walk in the street, some of our elderly folks will walk in the street, and that's not safe. It's not good, especially around the bends and things like that. So, I'm not just a person to come up and say, we need better sidewalks, we need this, we need that. You tell me what I can do to help the city along to get us better sidewalks so we become a community of health-driven people. Because I truly believe part of the problems that we have is we want to encourage people to be healthy, but how can they be healthy if they can't walk? People can't walk up to 160 down banks. I mean, I do it, it's very scary, but we need sidewalks. It would encourage people to walk instead of getting in the car, starting that up, getting in traffic, just to go four blocks to go to the drugstore or the little convenience store. To me, that's insane. When we were, I was younger, can't put the rest of the crowd with me, we walked everywhere. My mom took us by the hand, starting when we were little. We walked miles to go to whatever, and people don't do that today because a lot of it is, it's just easier to get in the car, crank it up, and drive a couple blocks, and it shouldn't be that way. We should have a city that promotes health, promotes walking, and connectivity through that. I need a lot of neighbors just walking the community, which brings me to trash. I spent two and a half hours, and I'm not tooting my horn, I wanted to do it, cleaning up the trash from the golf course all the way down Academy, all the way back down Confederate with one giant garbage bag and a quarter of another. And it's not just bottles, cups. There were grocery bags filled with dirty baby diapers. It was disgusting. I mean, and I'm like a person who doesn't like gross things. I wear gloves in the garden, okay, so I don't like to get my hands dirty. But I was so appalled at the amount of trash that's been collecting on these streets that I walk, I said, you know what, you know that thing about, you know, somebody should do it? Well, what about me? Maybe somebody is me, and I would like our community to kind of take that attitude. If we have properties, to police our own properties. If there's trash in the gutter, let's not leave it. Pick it up. So, anyway, cleaned all of that up. Now, I'm half tempted to now go through and clean up the sidewalks where all of the bushes and grass has grown over because, again, it's a trip hazard, and you can't even see the breaks in the sidewalk because of the foliage. So, I'm half tempted to do that on my next weekend.
Don't do that. Just let us know the area that needs to be trimmed, and we will get our Public Works folks, who are fabulous, to get that. They have so much to cover.
I'm sure.
But when we give them direction to specific issues, they will get there.
And I'll tell you the biggest problem with the trash. It's in the vacant lots. So, the open lots that you have on Academy or around the bends where there's the bushes of the properties have overgrown to the sidewalks and it's super thick, that is where people scope out to throw their trash. And I am here to say Budweiser is not having any difficulties in our city. Bud cans eight to one, of course. Okay? So, they're doing just fine. So, if, but we allow that because we let that foliage to overgrow so it looks like abandoned property. So, it's a great place to throw trash. Anyway, I hope you didn't take more than.
No, don't sit down yet. You have so much passion that I share and we all share because first on modality and the sidewalks, we're working on that, we truly are. And what can you do to help is to express your opinions to the RFATS group in Rockhill so that we can pull in more funding. The more people that yell, I can tell you, TDK gets a lot because they talk about it.
Okay.
Fort Mill's a little more scattered, we're not as concentrated as TDK, so definitely use your voice and tell them we have those needs. I think too that you might find it interesting that we do a second Saturday service because this old girl hates trash out on our roadways. I don't like it.
Amen.
And what that is, is a volunteer program where you can get supplied bags, gloves, vests from the town, adopt a section, and our Fort Mill Economic Development Partners adopted Dobie's Bridge Road, which is awful.
Okay.
I mean, and they do it every second Saturday morning, they get together, they collect it, set it, and then the city will come pick it up. So, you don't have to take it, take it home, and put it away. But it is something that, I'm just going to say, in this heat, I wouldn't advise going to pick up trash in this heat, but we will approach cooler times, and I don't understand why people throw things out their windows. I don't understand.
Well, that was going to be my last comment about signs. We don't have no littering signs, and I know that they may be effective, they may not, but if you put up a sign that says $1,000 fine for littering and even a little misnomer in the bottom, they might say surveillance, areas covered by surveillance. It could stop some people from just taking and throwing their trash out the window. Don't know for sure, but it might be something to consider, just a few in those key places like the areas that are lots that are open or around those bends, that there's a fine for littering in our city.
Yeah, and we've actually just addressed some of the sign problems that we have with so a preponderance of signs in town that people don't pick up, don't have permit to put them there, they block safety sightlines.
Oh, yeah.
For road systems, so it's a whole horde of problems that we certainly want to do something about. So, thank you for picking up that litter. Thank you for walking.
Absolutely.
It is something that the Economic Development Partners are working with us. We're going to have a modality study done around town very soon. We're working on grant money for that. Studies are not cheap, but, you know, we're working on those very issues because we too live here and want to walk safely back and forth. We all agree.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. And who, again, am I contacting in Rockhill?
RFATS.
RFATS.
R-S-A-T-S. It's a regional transportation.
Okay.
And you can find it on the web.
Okay, I will. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
I just want to add also, you know, I've picked up truckloads of trash as we grew up here. Change begins with each of us. So, you getting involved is exactly what we're trying. So, you coming before us, you expressing your concerns, and you taking action. So, second Saturday is a great thing. The communities, there's a lot of the community groups get involved and pick up. I see we've got Boy Scouts here, they do a lot of stuff, but that's, so your friend group and your extended family, and that's what we need to do because I, you know, I'd like to shoot the people that actually throw trash out.
Oh, I want to catch them.
Excuse me, strike down, Logan.
I want to be the streak.
His last name has an E on it.
Yeah, exactly. But if we can get focus on people littering helps, and if we can get community and individuals involved that care, because we all, we all care about our communities while we're involved. And so, thank you for coming, but this is exactly what we need. We need individuals getting involved, step up, speak up. Why would you litter? I mean, that's just a.
I would be remiss not to throw in cents minus here. We also have a program for the storm drains that you speak of.
Mm-hmm.
Where you can adopt a drain, and we will be happy to help you understand what needs to be done, and the more we keep those drains clear, the better the water runs off your street, the safer conditions. It's just an exceptional approach to it. So, we do have two programs in place that I would love for everybody to get involved in.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
I appreciate you showing up because a lot of people will hide behind a keyboard.
Absolutely.
Right. A lot of people will hide behind a keyboard and just complain, and I appreciate not only the action side of it, but being here.
Yes.
Being pleasant and all, it's.
It makes me want to go outside and pick up some.
It's easy to talk about it, but like with the scouts, they say, leave it better than you found it, and that's exactly what you're doing. So, thank you for your help.
Thank you so much. And I think you have a neighbor here, Garrett Swanberg? Yeah. Several houses down? Hi.
Hi. So, I'm a new transplant, been here about a year.
Welcome.
But wanted to share my perspective from living years in the Northeast where there's communities that have a lot more sidewalks per capita, and I think it's a great use of investment in health and similar, you know, health and empowerment and independence for children and families that take the leap and let their kids walk to school. So, it promotes that ability for even more independence, you know, for my kids to at some point be able to walk to Fort Mill High School, right, which is walkable from certain place where I live, but there's no, you know, no way to do so now. There's, you know, narrow streets, no sidewalks, but it's, you know, stone's throw away. You could walk it in, you know, probably eight minutes.
Right.
So, it'd be ideal to have that optionality and that flexibility, you know, for folks that, you know, want to get out, allow their kids to walk to school, right? Folks that like to ride bikes like my family and I.
Right.
Right? And not have to take the risk of riding in the street, right, with large trucks that kind of creep over and off the road into the, you know, where the riding area might be now. So, it really helps, I think, alleviate some of the strain on, obviously, on the traffic, right, issues we've had. And, you know, for example, we had a meltdown, I don't know what it was, eight, six months, like seven, eight months ago, for a major crash on I-77, and all these cars were going through Fort Mill, and that delayed the buses, you know, for my son to go to school. But in the future, if there was an option to walk, then, you know, families could obviously take fewer buses, let kids to walk to get back to school, and not have, and alleviate some of the strain already with that situation going on, right? And traffic in general, less pollution, obviously, if you can walk and you can bike, would be great, I think, to have and encourage more sense of community, right? If you meet your neighbors out walking, and I think a lot of folks are now kind of tunnel vision, jump in the car, crank up the AC, speed around the corners, and go break the next speeds. This might kind of alleviate, take us back a little bit to a simpler time and add some value.
Well, we're just now coming up to speed with understanding how higher taxes would help us do a lot of those things like the Northeast has perfected.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, obviously, you have to pay for it.
Yes, we do.
Taxes in the Northeast go to the roads, right? And they repave them from all the cracks from all the snow.
And Garrett.
From Boston, where I'm from.
Yeah, and you too are also in the county. You're not in the town. You might have a Fort Mill address.
Okay.
So, I too would ask you to contact the RFATS organization.
Sure.
And make that plea so that we can obtain the funding necessary to do the things we need to do.
Excellent.
And your county representative.
Yes, your county representative is Debbie Cloninger.
Okay.
So, by all means, every call, every contact matters in our negotiating for what we can get to do.
Sounds good.
Without raising our taxes to the levels that you experienced.
Oh, right, yeah.
Which I don't think you'd be real happy with.
Those are prohibitive. Right? The unions are getting, right, fat and happy from that, which is a different matter, but I think it's, you know, I speak certainly for myself and I'm sure others in the community in certain place where we have sort of disproportionate amount of kids.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a huge chunk of families with kids within walking distance of many of the schools like Fort Mill High, they would certainly benefit.
Absolutely.
Let me just put, excuse me, ma'am, go ahead.
No.
I was going to say, let me put a little background because this is a question that comes up a lot. I grew up here, a lot of us did. Back in those days, developments were not required to put in sidewalks, and you cannot, well, I can't say, it's very difficult to retrofit a sidewalk into existing neighborhood. All new neighborhoods now by new development codes require sidewalk on one or both sides and across on public roads. So we are adamant about that. And we've also talked about their trail plan. The problem is you've got roadways without rightways on the sides that we need to connect. And so when, when I'm talking to people, I'll say, you know, thirty years from now, they'll say, you know, those old guys actually were right about finally starting to come to connect. But in the beginning, there was nothing to connect. So we're requiring it in new developments. We're requiring it when they retrofit something. So the codes are, are, the process is working. It just can't work as fast as we want it to happen.
Sure.
I don't have sidewalks in my neighborhood.
It's the legacy homes, yeah.
And I also have curbs. And so people park in my yard all the time.
Right.
UPS truck drives up to my yard and it's like, can you not stay on the road? But so eventually they will all interconnect and we are working diligently
Yeah.
on this. So it's very timely and that's part of the trail master plan. It's not just sidewalks, but also interconnected nat- natural space. So you know, as the old saying is, you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
We're glad you came and we're glad to see that we're, we're all working the same way.
I know folks are tax sensitive, but it may be something to think about for a special assessment, right? And if, you know, obviously the more people that chip in reduces the overhead and the cost. And I would bet good money that that would increase home values at the margin over time. That kind of investment would raise the values of homes in Fort Mill. Uh, because it'd be more community, more, you know, walkable, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that investment would pay off in maybe five, ten years. But somebody to consider as an investment.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Chelsea, Chelsea, Chelsea?
Chelsea.
Chelsea.
Chelsea Beauchamp.
All right. I could get the Beauchamp. That was pretty cool.
Really?
That's a good name.
Most people can.
Yeah. So you also live in certain place?
I do, yes. And I'm, and I am Garrett's neighbor. And I just wanna like, so many people have already said kind of what I've come to say. I am so grateful when I saw about the trail master plan that you've been working on. And I just wanna come say, thank you.
We don't get a lot of those.
We're that excited too.
Yes, yes. So I have, I'm a wife and a mother to five kids, age six to fourteen. So we as a family love hiking. We love going on the trails that are existing. Um, and it's just a big part of our family culture. And so when I saw that and the ability to extend it more would just be fabulous. And then also, we are in that neighborhood where my son is in high school and we live like just over one and a half miles from high school. And he's super active and would love to just walk there or ride a bike. And it is so dangerous along Harris Road. Actually, on that day that Garrett was talking about when everything was stuck down, I told him, he was like, I could just walk there and be there. So I said, okay, I'll go with you. And I walked with him and I was terrified. And the cars were all stopped, so no one was even moving. But along Sam Smith and Harris Road, there's just these, I mean, there's just nowhere to walk. And so um, I guess, thank you for the master plan and just an encouragement to keep in mind, you know, having people be able to access especially those schools. And I know these are issues like what you were talking about where these are, you know, neighborhoods that have been around for.
Yours is a prime example because you have a sidewalk in your neighborhood and you have a sidewalk on Harris Street. And you see what? It stops at the end of your property. So the, the rub is now, how do we get from that across a state or county right away to do it? She's vicious on RFATS.
And most everything else.
And, and but there again, y'all was involved in, to talk to your county representative because that's not our road. And, and so y'all have more power than we do if you go, you know, before that coast, it's not part of the town. But you know, rising tide, right, you know, votes all vote. So that we get people involved because the trail master plan is a great thing, but it, we can't solve all the problems. But y'all are real close. You know, you got right at uh, uh, my, uh, Mun Road, you got a sidewalk and right at the end of your property. So there's not a lot for that. And you know, and you've got several neighborhoods right there.
Right. Yeah, so thank you. It sounds like RFATS and.
Yes. And not just that, but I, I will talk to everyone in this room and I think council will back me a hundred percent. We had a Pennies meeting um, month ago.
Nineteenth, yeah.
Nineteenth. And it was held at Catawba Ridge. It was published. It was where our community could come and provide input to what they'd like to see included on that Pennies project, which the town submitted um, the widening of twenty-one. So that, that very accident that you spoke of terrified all of us. We couldn't get in and out of our own facilities. So we did put that on there. I feel like it has a great chance of being approved. We've put a widening on the bypass as well. But there were only fifty-one people that attended that meeting. And of the fifty-one, many of them were us. So you know, this is a, this is a job we volunteer to do and we love to do it or we wouldn't do it. Um, but it, it literally requires the engagement of our community in those times that we need those numbers to represent our case on this side of the bridge. So when we see that, please don't hesitate to come. We would welcome you with open arms.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll make, I'll make more of an effort to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
And in addition, Tom Odette is also on the county council. And Tom served on the school board. So he definitely understands the Fort Mill community and our school district. Um, so feel free to reach out to both him and Debbie Cloninger for support.
Jurisdictionally Debbie is your councilwoman, but Tom is a very good advocate for Fort Mill. So by all means. And I, I have a friend on the back row that.
That's hiding.
Yeah, he, he is probably the best advocate I've ever seen uh, for multi-modality. Uh, he drives an electric car that I'm envious of. He cycles everywhere. He is just a really great guy. So Luther, if, if you see these folks, engage with them and let's see if we can't push for more good things in Fort Mill. Okay? All right. I have no further folks signed in to speak. So we will move to our first presentation. It is the introduction of our new HR manager, Becky Link. And Eric Davis will make that introduction.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're so tall.
So Mayor Savage, members of the town council, I have the privilege tonight to introduce Rebecca Link, or we can be a caller Becky in the office. Uh, she is our new HR director. Um, uh, she's been with the town of Fort Mill for about two months now. Uh, and it's had a really positive impact on our organization and the town. And so we're just super happy to have her with us. Uh, she has about twenty years of experience uh, in the human resource field. Uh, most recently before us, it was more the legal services field. So I wanted to have Becky uh, come and just introduce her to you so that you can put a name with a face. So I present to you Becky Link.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you for what you did.
Very nice to meet all of you. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure working with everyone in the town and I'm really happy to be here. So thank you so much.
Heard a lot of good stuff already. So nice to put a name to a face and keep it up.
Absolutely. We're thrilled. We're happy to have you. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. So um, I would like to go ahead with presentation number two, uh, the swearing in ceremony of Colin. Aquier.
That's the way I would've said it, too.
Yeah, Aquier. I had it written down on the previous piece of paper I had. So I knew exactly how to do that. Um, I will handle this. Uh, Colin is our new chief municipal judge and I have already spoken with him to let him know he has very large shoes filled in that we loved our previous judge, but I got a good feeling from the previous judge and from meeting him um, that we're gonna be equally happy. So let's get those babies back in here. So you want to introduce um, your family to us? Am I in the way?
Okay.
Colin, would you introduce your family to us?
Yeah, sure. This is Ling, she's two years old.
Of course.
This is Chloe. She's uh, five, five months.
How beautiful.
And then this is my wife, Desiree.
Aw, hi, Desiree.
Who's the real judge in the family? Let's just get that out there.
This is my friend Jasmine.
Hi.
Hello.
Her fiance, Thomas.
Mm-hmm, hi.
My mother-in-law right there. And then uh, this is also Quinzel.
All right.
Thank you.
Whom would you like to assist you?
Uh, sure, you can assist me.
We can do all things. Um, I think, yeah, you're gonna have to do that. So I'll stand here. How about that? All right. If you'll repeat after me. I, Colin.
I, Colin.
Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I duly qualified.
According to the constitution of this state.
According to the constitution of the state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of this office.
Of this office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge those duties.
Discharge those duties.
And will preserve.
And will preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the constitution.
And defend the constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As chief municipal judge.
As chief municipal judge.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
I pledge to uphold the integrity.
I pledge to uphold the integrity.
And independence.
And independence.
Of the judiciary.
Of the judiciary.
I pledge.
I pledge.
In the discharge of my duties.
In the discharge of my duties.
To treat all persons.
To treat all persons.
Who enter the courtroom.
Who enter the courtroom.
With civility.
With civility.
Fairness.
Fairness.
And respect.
And respect.
I pledge to listen courteously.
I pledge to listen courteously.
Sit impartially.
Sit impartially.
Act promptly.
Act promptly.
And rule.
And rule.
After careful and considerate deliberation.
After careful and considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice.
I pledge to seek justice.
And justice alone.
And justice alone.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
That's one of the most floral I've seen. You did great, Mom.
But I was sitting here thinking back on May, you remember how crazy kids, like, oh my gosh. That was helpful.
It's a whole package.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We welcome you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
I hope some more faces came out. That was funny. I'm glad we figured out one thing that blowing raspberry will not get you kicked out of town.
All right. That was wonderful. That was just wonderful. I love it when we have this. I was gonna say, we'll babysit anytime. Okay, we're gonna break one section of this because this is something, uh, I wasn't sure was gonna come in. But we had um, a very, a very important um, person to all of us um, that has chosen to take a new and exceptional opportunity. Um, this plaque is being presented to Davy Brune. He was our prior town manager. And they say some people come into your life for a reason or a season. Well, Davy's in our lives for all the seasons and all the reasons because he is one special human. He's not just a special manager or a special golf player, golf whatever. He is a special man. Um, this plaque says achievements and successes, everlasting friendships, unforgettable memories. May you be proud of the work you have done, the person you are, and the difference you have made. Look back with pride and look forward with dignity. We will always remember your dedication. So much of you will remain in the heart of us all. So we would like to send you off with our blessings, our best wishes, and certainly all our hearts. I just wanted to creep away and not have big to do of any kind. But he's worthy of so much more, so much more.
Thank you. I wish I had the words, but I don't. But I'm thankful to Mayor Savage, all the town council, for all the support they give me over the years. And uh, as I look at my friends, my teammates, um, some for twenty-three years, some for just a few months. They have been the, the best team I could have ever asked for. Um, Fort Mill is great for one reason and it's them. Our teammates put together, they put their best foot forward on a daily basis for our citizens and our council. And I'm extremely proud and thankful for each and every one of them. Thank you.
Some things are so hard. All right. One more. We're gonna do presentation number three, Employee of the Quarter. Mina McDonald, would you please join me?
Thank you, Ron.
Got a new job, Ron?
Yes, he's my new volunteer. Mina.
Pretending to be.
So proud of you. So, um, employees are nominated for going above and beyond their normal duties for exceptional work and making a significant contribution to the town of Fort Mill. Each quarter nominations are received by staff and a committee made up of a representative from each town department, reviews votes on the nominations. Town administration has no vote. The employee of the quarter receives recognition at a town council meeting henceforth tonight. A framed certificate, and here you go. As well, uh, they will have recognition on a board displayed in the lobby of town hall as well as a hundred dollar gift certificate. Don't spend that all in one place. Uh, it is my honor to represent this quarter's award to Mina McLean McDonald, Stormwater Management Corps Mayor. I'd like to read to you one of the many nominations that Mina received. I would like to nominate Mina for Employee of the Quarter. This nomination is being submitted for Mina's work on a stormwater mural at Kingsley. Mina spearheaded the project which involved bringing together the town of Fort Mill, Domtar, Kingsley, Sherwin-Williams, the Arts Council of York County, the Catawba River Park Guild, Olive's Mud Puddle LPL Financial, Clear Springs Development, the Fort Mill School District, and York County Government. The project began with a school district-wide art contest where winners were selected and their art was used as an inspiration in the design of the mural. Once the winners were chosen, the mural was designed by very own local Debbie Whitsett of Olive's Mud Puddle and other artists from the Catawba Art Guild, Catawba River Art Guild. After approval from all involved parties, the artwork was painted onto the sidewalk at the Kingsley Town Center. And yes, it was hot. Wasn't it really? Using volunteer artists, business representatives, council members, town employees and community volunteers. This project involved countless hours of work and coordination efforts on Mina's part. She worked tirelessly with school district businesses, artists and other municipalities to coordinate efforts, gather resources through grants and donations, organize volunteers and work with the students. This project began as a simple idea that Mina was able to grow into the beautiful piece of art that it is today. Not only is it a work of art for the public to enjoy, but it is a wonderful effort to bring together so many parts of our community. I would love for Mina to be recognized for her endless work on this project. There's so much more we could say about this young lady. But I just can't, I can't even find the best words to say how lucky we are to have her as an employee of the town.
Mina's feeling deep that second Saturday starts next month. Thank you, Mina. Your contribution is amazing.
For those of you who have not seen it, please go out and visit because it is a awesome community project and art. But it was amazing how everybody, how many people was it was involved? When you usually have the number off the top of your head.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one volunteers for over five hundred hours.
Yeah, that's, that's a community project.
And it is beautiful. It's, it's a beautiful addition. So thank you. And I hope that.
Already working on our next.
The thing about Mina is it's not just the mural. It's everything that she, she puts her hands on. She puts a hundred percent. I've even with, with my son who's thirteen, I've used you as a personal example of anything worth doing is worth doing right and giving a hundred percent. And you, you show that every single day. So thank you.
And she's spent a lot of hot hours this summer um, educating the public, especially uh, the younger um, generation, teaching them about how to protect our environment. Um, I know she lives and breathes it every day. So thank you, Mina.
Thank you so much. All right. Finally gonna turn a page here. Presentation number four, Fort Mill Trail Master Plan. Melody Carrigan and Haley, oh, I'll just slaughter that too. Mafesi?
Yes.
McAdams Consulting. Hi, Penelope.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, before Haley takes her presentation tonight from McAdams, I just wanted to briefly say a little something about the process, if I may. Um, a year ago, we hired McAdams to be the town's consultant to develop the Fort Mill Trail Master Plan. This Trail Master Plan is a community-led initiative. This Trail Master Plan is a community-led initiative that proposes a comprehensive trail network based on input from residents, visitors, key area stakeholders, town staff, and the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee. At this time, I would like to recognize the Stakeholders Committee for volunteering their time to serve on this committee for a whole entire year. And these individuals are very busy individuals throughout the community, but made the time to help us. They include the Town of Fort Mill Mayor, Gwen Savage, Fort Mill School District, Joe Romanek, Fort Mill Economic Partners and Representative from Domtar, Jane Martin, Ann Springs Close Greenway Director, Executive Director, John Gordon, Carolina Thread Trail Brett Bearneck, and Town of Fort Mill Chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. James Traynor. Also, I would like to thank the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee members, which included the Mayor, Councilman Wolf, and Councilman Garrison for their time to attend the meeting on January 24 of this year. And they provided their expertise to the committee. Also, I would be remiss not to thank Brown Simpson, Fort Mill Parks and Recreation Director, for also contributing his time to this meeting as well. We would also like to thank the Fort Mill community for taking the time to complete our surveys in the fall of 2022. We had over a thousand participants take our survey. And the craziest thing in my career, I've 19 years in local government, our public meeting that we held with McAdams on February 8 at Unity Presbyterian, we had over a hundred people attend this public meeting. And our consultants received excellent feedback. And, and quite frankly, they told me afterwards, we're so surprised. We're used to, you know, public meetings only being 10, 15 people, and we had over a hundred people. So thank you to all of the residents and the community of Town of Fort Mill. It made us planners and the consultants proud to have public engagement at its finest. Today, we have Haley Nafesi from McAdams who will present the Trail Master Plan. And just for, just a little quote that I like to always end with. People that know about the Ann Springs Greenway, the legendary Chuck Flink. He's a national engineer, Greenway guru. He's the one that designed the Ann Springs Closed Greenway. And he has a great quote in his book that he just published. It says, "It is understood today the trails and the greenway systems are essential to thriving 21st century communities because they help create a healthier community." And thank you for doing the first step and allowing us to have funding for the first step to have a Trail Master Plan. And now I'm going to leave Haley to this discussion.
Thank you, Penelope.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to give a brief tour of the Trail Master Plan. It is 200-plus pages, so we're going to breeze through this quickly. Very high level, so once the town, and if they adopt this plan, you'll have the chance to review it yourself. Thank you. So again, we're going to do a tour of the Trail Master Plan. That's going to include an overview of the chapters, including the introduction, existing conditions, community engagement, network recommendations, policy and program recommendations, implementation strategies. I'll cover what's included in the appendices. And then we'll take a moment for next steps and questions. Thank you. So this is a high-level graphic representing our timeline for this, for the project. We've got four distinct phases that align with the chapters in the plan. The first phase is project visioning, and that began in August of 2022. The second phase is existing conditions, and that's when we did the data gathering. The town provided us with GIS shapefiles to create mapping and assess any opportunities and constraints. We also deployed the community survey at that time. This led to informing any plan recommendations, including policy program and any segments for the trail network. And then this informed our implementation and final plan. So here's a cover of the plan. And here's our table of contents and acknowledgements. Here's our introduction. We talk about vision and goals, trail benefits, existing conditions, and community demographics. Again, we've got a picture of the timeline and, oop. That's all right. At the beginning of the project, we had a interactive meeting with the steering committee, and we tried to narrow down what was most important to our steering committee as well as the public. So these were the guiding goals and the vision for the plan. Hard to read from here, but I think we had safety, project feasibility, accessibility and connectivity, and then that community is up at the top. So here's our study area profile, just a little snapshot of the Town of Fort Mill and how the trails in the region connect within it. Here's our high-level overview of the community demographics, including summaries on population trends, age, education, race and ethnicity, language, et cetera. At the end of this chapter, we've got a benefit section for greenways and trails, including mobility, environmental benefits, connectivity, et cetera. Next, I'll take you to chapter two, which is focused on existing conditions. Here, we outline any kind of findings from our GIS analysis as well as our site visit. Here's an example of the key destinations map in our existing conditions section. We also analyze human environment and natural environment considerations, and we'll look at a few of those maps. So within the human, human considerations, we've got existing active transportation facilities, private trails that we looked at. Planned trail segments, planned parks. And then for the, for some of the environmental considerations, we looked at endangered species and habitat planning areas as well as flooding. Also, as part of this chapter, we reviewed previous planning efforts from RFATs within the town, within the county, as well as any policies within the town and the county as well. So during our site visit, we took many photos and we compiled those, and we tried to work with the town to decide, you know, what, what are our main opportunities and constraints associated with developing a trail network that serves the town? So here on the left, we have pictures from our site visit with accompanying captions. And then the opportunities and constraints that you saw on the previous slide are numbered on the map. Chapter three is focused on community engagement. We had three steering committee meetings, subcommittee meeting, one public meeting, and a public survey. Here's just a little snapshot of the community survey findings. We use publicinput.com as our survey platform. During the survey, we had two interactive mapping questions that the public could drop pinpoints responding to specific questions related to those mapping questions. So the next two slides show what, what those look like. Next, we have a slide about the public workshop. And during the public workshop, we had an interactive mapping exercise there where everyone could come by the table, stick a sticky dot on the map to showcase what their priority projects were. So next, we go into network recommendations. During this chapter, we discuss design guidance, including typical cross-sections, priority projects, and I think the cut sheets might be in here. Oh, trail mandates, trail mandates. So here's an example of our typical cross-sections. On this slide specifically, it focuses on paved trails. So paved trails being your side paths or your greenways. And we have preferred and constrained showcased on this page just depending on what the constraints are in the, with right-of-way utilities, et cetera. Here we have side path, typical sections, with and without curb and gutter. And we also propose intersection treatments and crossing improvements such as paved striped crosswalks, refuge islands, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and high-intensity activated crosswalks. So here is our map of the proposed trail network. We do have regional trail connections proposed on this map as well as existing trail connections. Per the town's request, we split up this map into a few, few simplified versions to help focus on specific facility types. So the Carolina Thread Trail is a huge regional network within the, within the Town of Fort Mill. We've got a few snapshots of a few of the trails within the Carolina Thread Trail Network highlighted on this page. Here, we talk about recommended crossing treatments and blueway access locations. Blueway access locations would be any location along a river or creek that you may paddle or kayak at. So next, we go into the prioritization process. This was, this process was informed by the steering committee and town staff. We had four different criteria that we used to rank and score. Segments that were clipped to Town of Fort Mill's boundary. We wanted to make sure that these projects that we were selecting would be used for the cut sheet, cut sheet projects that we'll show later in the presentation. This is how all the segments panned out, had a bunch of them with ties. Here is our first example of a cut sheet. Our first prioritized project according to the town steering committee staff was Harris Road and Harris Street Side Path. On these cut sheets, we include pictures of the existing conditions, a typical section for the proposed facility, a little snapshot including location, length, crossing treatments, implementation partners, as well as cost estimates in asphalt and concrete. We also include the prioritization ranking. And then to the right is a map with some design considerations. So our second cut sheet is on Harris Street Park Trail. This will be, this is a proposed greenway connector between Harris Street Park and I believe that's Riverview Elementary. The third one is Old Nation Road Side Path. This is a side path between downtown Fort Mill and Springfield Parkway. And the fourth one is Tom Hall Street Side Path. So the next chapter focuses on policies and program recommendations. Some of the recommended policies are highlighted in this table, just to name a few. Reducing townwide speed to 25 miles per hour, adopting a complete streets ordinance. Recommended programs are focused on encouragement programs, educational programs, enforcement, project-based, and evaluation programs. So to name a few, like volunteer cleanup, organi, like getting people together to clean up the trails and deploying trail counters along new, new and existing trails, using wayfinding signage to help people guide along the trail network. So lastly, we have our implementation chapter. It focuses on potential partners and their roles and responsibilities in implementing the trail network. We also include an action plan with strategies outlined in a trail maintenance recommendation section. So here we have a few of the identified partners that could help implement the trail segments from the proposed network. We've got York County, Town of Fort Mill, SDOT, RFATs, Catawba Lands Conservancy, Nation Ford Land Trust, Ann Springs Close Greenway, of course, local residents and community groups, as well as the private sector. To the right, we have the action plan. It's a few pages long, but we've got 20-plus or so strategies outlined in this to help guide implementation. And we tried to assign different timeframes to each of them so it could be short-term, medium-term, long, long-term, or perpetual. On this slide, we've got the project development process overview. And then we have a little section on trail maintenance recommendations too. So I'll close with the appendices. At the end of the plan, you can find additional design resources, detailed cost information on those cut sheets, additional community involvement information, so any kind of materials that we displayed or presented at any of the meetings, as well as funding resources. Those are also included as well. So the, here are some design resources. Funding resources, we've got the local, state, and federal level. And then for next steps, we've got plan adoption. So we appreciate your time and consideration of this plan.
Well, Haley?
I've been doing this role, not the mayor's role, but on council, I mean, for 19 years. Working with McAdams has been a pleasure.
You have been thorough, complete. It, it has just been absolutely a blessing to have you on board to take the input of so many wonderful people, such a great project, and make it simple, direct, and clear. So I know we're going to be successful, and I hope you feel like you're a great part of that.
Thank you.
So with that, council members, do you have questions for Haley?
No, I'd just say, well done. I didn't read all 254 pages, but I read most of them. But it was nice to have, here's the action items. Obviously, I wish, I can only speak for myself. I wish we could say, we just, okay, let's do it. The town actually has many challenges as we're facing much growth, and we have a lot of needs. But this gives us a good defined path on how we can address these things. Obviously, we're very interested in walking, and we are too. I enjoy the nature trails and stuff, so I think it helps. It gives us a leg up of how to accomplish this. It's not going to be done overnight, that's why you do a plan, you know, so we can work through it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
This council's been very focused, targeted this year, and very intentional in trying to make sure we have plans in place. While we may not have funding in place for everything, being able to have a vision of what our goals are for our citizens has been really important so that when opportunities come available where we can go get a grant, where we can get some partnerships, we have something to be able to hand out and say, we're ready to go, just help us. And this is a great testament to showing we've got a great vision for what this town needs, and we just need some help getting there. So thank you very much.
I was going to say, this is, and this is a, a nice living document too. So 10 years from now, maybe none of us are all sitting here, but that document will still be there.
All of those projects will be done by you.
So for future councils, they have a blueprint, they have a, a path to, to go on. So hopefully it is this group here. But if it's not, that's something that's going to live on, so thank you.
I'd very much like to recognize, I see some members of our group on the back row. If you're a member of the committee that has been working on this project, would you please stand so that we can celebrate you as well? Come on, stand up! Eight years ago, I learned things are so much better when there are people working with you. Partnerships have become an incredible mainstay of the progress that we're making. Now, I didn't say the growth of Fort Mill, I said the progress. So I just want to be certain that we all recognize many wonderful people have participated as we bring this project to this point. And we're going to need those and then some to take it into the future for my children, my grandchildren to enjoy. And somebody would be pushing me up and down those things, right? So, you know, I really, really think this is one of the finest programs that this town could ever embrace. So I'm, I'm just really thrilled. The Greenway has been a tremendous help. There's, there's so many to thank, and I think the future looks very bright. Thank you.
I would also like to recognize, thank you to Penelope. I know this is a passion of yours. And I know we started talking about this a long time ago. And to see it spool up, and it's really starting to get a lot of steam, is exciting for us, and I know it is for you. So great job behind it, pushing, keep pushing.
Thank you, thank you. It's a treasure. I really appreciate the mayor and the council for supporting staff and to believing in us to actually create this master plan. And this is like Councilman Garrison said, this is a blueprint. We have this, and now we know which direction to go. And we will be in touch with both of y'all, all of y'all, to talk about the next steps to have this adoption process. So when developers come in, they understand where, where our vision is to connect trails and sidewalks in our community.
That's a good example of town listening. And that's what the people are really wanting, the people that live in town. This is something they've gotten excited about, and I think that's helping build steam too, so it's going to- Even those that live in the county are excited. They're, they're right on the cusp, but they're still excited.
So, no pun intended, but great step forward. Thank you. Thank you.
It's a great path forward.
Yeah, there you go. Walk this way.
Okay, we'll stop there.
All right, thank you, Penelope. Awesome work, and thank you again, Haley. Presentation number five, 2023 August Events. Presentation number five, 2023 August Events Presentation, Jakana Hester. We need to find a way to turn the heat down, Jakana.
Right. We need to do that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, remember this face if I come before you.
And if he does, you call me.
He was talking about shooting people, right?
Yeah, boy, yeah, I'm gonna have to work on my...
Hey, you know, you guys got a good idea.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I swear it was a mess. It looked funny.
That was great.
No, I just love him. He is great.
He is great. Okay, Jakana, smaller audience, but we all care. Bye, Luther.
Bye, Luther.
Yes, I am presenting our upcoming August events. On Friday, August 18th, we will be having Tribute Fest at the Fort Mill Amphitheater at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Our first band, Greggy and the Jets, is an Elton John tribute band, and they will be performing from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., followed by On the Border from 7:30 to 9:00, which is an Eagles tribute band. For the food trucks for the evening, we have ponchos tacos, popcorn heaven, King of Fire, Charlie B Seafood, Jam Rock Jerk Spot, Kona Ice, Sweet Dog Lemonade, Happy Treats, Say Cheese 518, Gizmo's Grill, Spoons Off the Hook, Salute You Hobbs Nuts, and we've added Nikki's Designs as well. Beer and wine will be provided by Amore Artists and Hobos and Illumination Wines. Fort Mill History Museum will be doing the ID checks and wristbands, and then our prices are domestic $6, craft $7, wine $8. Cash and cards are accepted for beer and wine, and then for our food trucks, some take cash and cards, some take only cash, and some take only card, so it's best just to bring both. This is a site map of the event. Everything will be centralized on the amphitheater side of the park. And we will have one road closure, which is Audrey Street. We're going to close it from 3:30 to 9:30 p.m. at North White to just before the amphitheater parking lot. This will be used for our vendors-only entrance and exit for the evening. Parking is available at Veterans Park, 106 North White Street, Calhoun Street Park, 203 Calhoun Street, Looms Way, and then handicap parking will be available behind the amphitheater, and we ask the public to not park along any roadways around the park. And you can bring chairs or blankets. We ask that you don't bring any coolers, no outside food, no outside drinks or alcohol, but because of this heat, we are allowing people to bring water bottles or cups of water are allowed during this heat. We ask that golf carts to please park in the designated parking lots. We ask that bicycles, you can ride your bike, too, to the park, but just don't ride it around in the park, so, you know, you're not hurting anyone. No pets, only service animals are allowed, no smoking or vaping, no profanity, and no firearms and weapons. We are seeking a resolution designating Walter Elijah Park on Friday, August 18th, from 6:00 to 9:00, as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment for this date at Walter Elijah, and all the details are in the resolution for this. And it's hard to believe, but scarecrow season is right around the corner, so we are going to be starting registration on Monday, August 21st for this. Important dates to note is the scarecrow installation week will be September the 28th through October the 5th. This actual crawl will be October the 6th through the 31st. We will have our scarecrow voting by our judges, the South Carolina Strawberry Festival Queens do our judging for this, and they will do that the week of October the 9th. A scarecrow voting by the public on Facebook is October the 6th through the 27th, and then our winners will be announced on Town of Fort Mill social media on October the 30th. And then we ask our participants to remove their scarecrows on November the 1st and 2nd, and the registrations will be accepted October the 21st through September the 8th, and you can find all the forms. We also take sponsor applications for this event, but you can find all those forms at fortmillsc.gov, and we just ask everyone to follow Town of Fort Mill on social media to keep updated, not just on town events information, but for all other important information as well, and you can visit our website at fortmillsc.gov, and then follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter.
Awesome. I mean, spectacular. The only thing I would ask, I did read a weather forecast today for now until October 31st, and apparently, the heat's not going away until October the 31st, but we'll have a lot of rain, so how would you ask that everyone engage with any cancellation or delay?
If anything, yeah, was canceled or delayed, we post that on our website, as well as our town social media.
Wonderful.
So if, excuse me.
No, no, I was just saying, I hope everybody gets that. It will be posted, we'll make a decision in advance, we won't cancel or delay unless absolutely necessary, but we do post that so that you're not surprised to arrive at the park and we're not there.
Yeah, my question was gonna be, so if, let's say if it does rain, and we're not canceling, ponchos are allowed, but umbrellas are not, or whatever, whatever?
Canopies.
Well, we, of cour, we allow people to use umbrellas, of course.
I'm just saying, I think about when you go to football games, it's gonna be one of those questions come up, can I come, is where poncho, can I, whatever it might be?
The beauty of it is with the way we've done the amphitheater, there's plenty of room spread out, you know, and I know what you're talking about with Panthers, you can't have an umbrella because you're gonna be poking the person around you, so we do have enough space to make it a safe activity, but, you know, certainly, we all want to be careful.
Right.
Well, getting off of the weather, I want to really thank you for staff for putting together music that actually I understand what the heck they're saying. These are older people, these are obviously bands that are of our generation, you young people, sorry, but I had to listen to it all the time for my kids, but I think it's a great lineup. Obviously, these events are widely attended, they've been, you know, great, and then the scarecrow crawl is just some of its, of its own, and it's like, that's amazing, and if I had any creative talent, I would actually build a scarecrow, but it would scare people away, but, so these are, you know, y'all continue, you and your staff continue to do just outstanding work, so I want to acknowledge that, and I know a lot of people come up and say, yeah, that event was awesome, I loved being here, and so just thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
The only concern I was presenting was that's also tonight that all the high school football teams are being played.
Right.
And I'm glad that we are allowing people to bring water in, that is one concern that I have received some comments, a lot of these events, it's hard for the vendors to plan for the popularity, and we certainly don't want anyone to be dehydrated or have heat stroke issues, so I'm glad we are changing that or adopting a little bit of a change, and it's good to know that we do have service providers out there, our police department, our fire department, yeah, will be there in attendance for these and making sure everybody does stay safe through this heat, so thank you for organizing this.
Thank y'all.
And hopefully the heat will take it easy, and we can all have a peaceful, easy feeling.
Reggie and the Jets.
Reggie and the Jets.
I can't thank you enough, along with all of the town staff that support these events, because guys, if we think we get hot attending, just imagine if your job was to set it up, staff it, tear it down, and get ready for the next one. It is a really tough job that I think we underestimate and underappreciate, so, hear it from my heart, we really appreciate everything that you do.
Very much.
All right. Thank you, Jakana.
Thank you.
All right, there are no old business items, we do have one new business item, a resolution to provide certification relating to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act of 2013 for properties currently or formerly known as 219 and 221 Main Street. Penelope?
Good evening. Due to Chris Pettit being under the weather, I'm presenting this information to all of you. Mayor and council, the resolution before you this evening has to do with the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act of 2013. Staff has been working with outside counsel, as well as with attorneys representing Custer Commercial, to draft the resolution before you this evening. The resolution provides the South Carolina Department of Revenue with a necessary certificate to state that a portion of 219 and 221 Main Street were vacant, and therefore eligible for certain income tax relief through the Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act. As noted previously, staff had outside counsel review the request, and they had no issue with counsel proceeding with the approval of the resolution. One item of note is this will not impact any revenue coming to the town, county, school district, and it's only to provide income tax benefits to, to the developer, as allowed in state law, as a benefit for revitalization of abandoned buildings throughout the state. So the portion of those two buildings was the upstairs portion that was abandoned, and this is what the resolution is here for tonight.
Any questions for Penelope?
I think it's very beneficial, obviously Fort Mill's downtown area is fairly small, and we do have some abandoned buildings which might need to be addressed in the future, but for most of them are occupied or being used, but I could think this would be very beneficial from the state, and I think Mr. Custer's here, is, I think your Chester is looking into it, obviously has nothing to do with us, but I think it is to help revitalize downtown area, so I think if there's zero negative impact on the residents, taxpayers of Town of Fort Mill, that they do benefit from the renovation and putting these buildings back in place, I think it's, you know, it's a great win for the community, and we appreciate people investing in our community, because it's, you know, it's a great opportunity, we, our downtown area is small, it is growing, it's expanding, but those buildings need to be preserved if at all possible, so.
I say this a lot, there's a lot of people, a lot of towns in this state would like to have our Main Street, they'd like to have what we have. I moved here 22 years ago yesterday, and I remember driving down here in 2001, and in my mind, Fort Mill's this large city between Rock Hill and Charlotte, and I was like, man, there's nothing on Main Street, but look what we have now. I mean, it is busting that scene, and we appreciate Custer, your investment in Fort Mill, and the impact of Fort Mill Economic Partners, and, you know, I buy them what the ordinance has written, so.
Shaw, since you're sitting there, I would like the world to know how much the community appreciates the quality work that you've done on our Main Street. These two buildings are beautiful, they're absolutely beautiful, they remind me of so many days gone by when downtown was very special, and it is again, and I know you personally have put a lot of effort into that, and I would like to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
As it's written?
As it's written, I was trying to see which one, for new business item number one, how about that?
Second. I'll second.
I was getting there, I was so excited about Greggy and the Jets.
Thought the motion was about to fail there.
Well, no, I'm trying to say, you know, it's old guys.
I have a motion to approve new business item number one, and Mr. Moody has made a second, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penelope. New business item number two, 2023 Tribute Fest, I believe we just had a very nice presentation on that. A resolution designating Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street, on Friday, August 18th, 2023, 6:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m., as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment on Friday, August 18th, 2023, 6:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street. Jakana?
I make a motion to approve new business item number two.
Alan needs a second.
We've got a motion and a second.
You don't even need to talk. See, they, we like the older music, I'm just telling you.
So, now that we have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you, Jakana. Good presentation. There are no information discussion items, however, we do have two items in executive session this evening. Counts, please note the council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when we come back into public session. Executive session item number one, discussion incident to proposed contractual matter between the Town of Fort Mill and Lennar Carolinas LLC. The second item is the receipt of legal advice relating to potential claims and ongoing legal matters. Do I have a motion to go into?
I make a motion to move into executive session.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
I'll second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, we will return. Thank you. All right, let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session, and I will entertain a motion to return to regular session.
Make a motion to return out of executive session.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you so much. All right, we do not have anything that we need to take a vote on out of those discussions or the prior agenda. Mr. Wolf, what do you have for the good of the whole?
Oh, I think it was very exciting to see the results of the Trail Master Plan, and also the community's excitement about that, so that tells us that we're actually on the right track, and I'd like to invite the community to continue to be involved in, in our communities, all of us live here, so, and look forward to hearing some music at the upcoming concert that I actually understand, so that's a great evening.
Good stuff. Hope I get back in time.
Mr. Moody?
I've never heard of most of those bands. I'm just kidding, just kidding. I had to do that, I had to do that. No, I wanted to just piggyback on, it's great to Lisa and Alan's comments, we are really, this, you know, 10 years from now, probably none of us will be sitting here, but we are trying to lay the foundation and do a lot of long-term planning, facilities planning, strategic planning, Trail Master planning, lots of planning, financial planning, we got Mr. Eric Davis out here, and so, you know, just trying to lay the groundwork for long-term plans that really have never been put in place before now, so I think that's exciting, we got our, you know, I had a friend, as a side note, that came to Fort Mill for the first time, he, his daughter was in a softball tournament at Rock Hill, and he said, well, I'm at your, at your house, and I was like, all right, I'm gonna ride in down Main Street, it was a Saturday morning, the strip, the grass had been cut up here at the park, it was all striped, and all the flags were out and the flowers, and then we, I was like, we're gonna go to Kingsley, so we go over to Kingsley, and he said, he lives in Lata, South Carolina, it's like 2,000 people, and hit that, and he said, man, this is a really nice town. I said, yeah, it is, you know, and I'm really fortunate to be here, so, and to serve with each of you, and, but that's about all I have.
Excellent. Ronnie?
I'll piggyback with Chris, it's nice to, all the presentations with Jakana and everybody, and all the hard work that staff's doing, I just hope I get back from Myrtle Beach in time to hear the concert Friday night.
Hope you do, too. Lisa?
School's about to be back in session again, so reminder, and thank goodness, they start back on Monday, so be aware of the safety in traveling through the communities, and also because we are all big football fans, the school district has implemented a clear back policy this year. So that is a slight change, unfortunate way the tums are right now, and that we're having to do that, but yeah, just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. I am also very proud of our town, I'm kind of helping with our planning of our class reunion this year, and the fun part is being able to put blurbs out there about our 100th, 150th year celebration, and the farmer's market will be going on that day, and several other activities that are already planned and in place, inviting people to our community, and being able to show them a link for downtown, and here's a bunch of restaurants you can go to, so, makes me really proud to be able to brag about Fort Mill.
How many years?
30.
Five.
There's hotels in Fort Mill now, which 30 years ago is when people came back and said, hey, hey, you stay at a hotel in Fort Mill.
I'm coming up on 60.
I know, you beat me every day, that's good.
Alan? We always talk about getting involved, you know, what can, what can citizens do? Get involved. That was a perfect example tonight of being involved. Hopefully that continues, go to RFATs with the same passion about the mobility and everything else. else. That was great to see. The second Saturday cleanup is coming up, we're starting that back up. Again, just get involved, you know, just find something to do to be, to be part of the community. Davy Broome, just once again, just everything that he's done for the town, he is Fort Mill, so I thank you again for everything that he's done. The last thing, more of a PSA for any potential brides, football season's coming up, don't plan your wedding during football season.
I got married on a Friday night because Saturday was opening day, so.
Roll tide.
Yeah. No cops.
Just the speakers, so we're six of them tonight. I, I put a lot of value in their presentation in that they came to just, to speak and have their voices heard, but they did it eloquently. I think they were not aggressive, everybody's passionate about things, but the way they presented their passion is great. They showed up here, here, and got in front of the microphone, did not hide behind a keyboard, I say that often, but they had the guts to come do it, and I respect their tenacity when it comes to, you know, the lady that was picking up the trash. I mean, that's, that's outstanding, she shouldn't have to do it, but she did it, and that's for a passion of hers. And she relayed that, and I hope, even if one other person, it's like, you know what, I need to find out where she is, and I'm gonna join her, we just doubled that passion for her. So that was pretty cool. There was a gentleman, I got a chance to meet him, 7:45 Sunday morning, gotta give a shout out to Public Works, Johnny Woodruff, he was watering the flowers on the weekends. Thought that was cool, and my apologies to the other gentleman that probably waters the flowers during the week, but he was the weekend guy. We were out there bright and early and got a chance to chat with him, shake his hand, thank him. So I love the flowers on Main Street, and that was pretty cool to get a chance to meet him, because people don't think about, there's flowers on Main Street every day, somebody has to replant them, repot them, somebody has to water them, somebody has to fill a water truck full of water, and he had already been up and down Main Street, so he probably got a 6:30 start, something like that, so much respect to the crew that keeps the flowers live on Main Street.
Raymond's job. And he has a smile on his face every time.
Oh, yeah, he was great.
Raymond was fantastic, I loved him. I let Raymond have his way the second year I was mayor about what to plant. I don't know if you remembered or not, and he painted sweet potato vine all over the park, and it was going, so I get to pick.
That's for my time, Gwen.
Oh, no, it wasn't. So, the only thing I want to add, because we've had a lengthy meeting, a couple of things though, how nice to have people say, what can I do to help you?
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't an accusation that we were falling down on what we're doing, but what can I do to help you? That is such a beautiful, beautiful phrase to me, and it makes me feel connected to our community in a way that oftentimes we lose, because so many people are behind a keyboard and being rude and ugly.
Not to interrupt, but there is a Facebook page called Get Involved that one of our strawberry queens has put out there, if you're looking for a way to get involved in the community.
Is it Christina?
Yeah, Christina Tever's got it out there, and it's really nice, because it's what the care center needs this month, it's about the second Saturday, she's done a really good job of just bringing people together. If you need a place to volunteer or get involved, code to get involved.
She's wonderful. She and her husband have done a lot. They were the initial coaches for that Little League team that won the World Series that we were so happy about when they came into town. She's great, she's our Mrs. Strawberry Queen. I also want to continue our efforts to look at the pedestrian safety. It was evident here that other people are thinking in areas that truly are not as dangerous as some of the ones, bridge, that are some of the ones that we talk about on a regular basis. The Bossy Bueller's, the head of Main Street, the foot of Main Street, we must address those. Guys, we don't have money for sidewalks everywhere, and quite frankly, for the people on this bench, I hate making sidewalks available on the town's dollar when Whiteville Park has been here for 80 years, and they don't have any.
That's right.
And they've been paying taxes for 80 years, so just keep that wired into your brain, you understand what I'm saying. We're responsible, not just to the people that just got here, but we're responsible for the people that built it, and there's still a lot of those here breathing. Your yard and my yard, growing up, didn't have the sidewalk, it was across the street, and you could get killed getting over there. We didn't have it, so we walked with a little path, do you remember that path?
Oh, yeah.
So, so help me Hannah, I want to do the sidewalks, I understand, but I also think there's a reckoning about where is it safe for pedestrians? We can't make everywhere safe for pedestrians, you know, and there actually isn't a whole lot of places to walk to, to be honest. So I do think we could start with where the schools are and the neighborhoods that are close enough to walk, we could probably do that, but maybe we need some of those school tax dollars to help with those sidewalks, maybe.
And I think as we work through that plan, because I was, I was up, I go up and down Harris Street a lot, and that's a prime example, it stops right there and it starts right back up here, so there is a section, but it's not in the town, but, but that would be a great connector for two big, fairly good-sized neighborhoods back to the school.
Did you notice who was in the corner?
John Boys.
Did you not, did anybody notice who was in the corner? Nobody? That was the guy that came to the Pennies Project, that's a town worker in the utilities department, that asked about the sidewalks on Harris, and I had Davy meet with him and tell him, please come, please find out about these things, so that you don't feel distanced from what your town, your workplace is doing to address those problems. So he and his wife came, that's who that was in the back corner.
Jones Branch is where he-
Yeah. I try so hard to see who's here, I didn't know the older gentleman back there. Did you? Anybody? I didn't know who that was. What was, I had one more thing. Apparently I didn't. Thanks to all of you, we have had a number of difficult meetings that have been last-minute calls to you. You put so much effort in different ways, each one of you brings something unique to the table, and the way, you know, Chris reads every page, I can't do that, Lisa does charts, I can't do that. But what we do bring, if we show and continue to show the respect for one another, we will have the best decisions for our community and the people that we serve and the staff that serves us. So thank you for everything you do, we don't always agree, but I hope we always part on the right terms. So thank you, your efforts are noticed and greatly appreciated, so thank you. Virginia, there ain't no possible way to say thank you enough for you being the glue and doing all the stuff that makes our jobs easier, so thank you. Eric, you've been a joy to behold, I'm so happy to have you.
Can you tell my wife that?
We've only known you a couple weeks, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All right, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you, you guys are great.